Should be good.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District's School Committee to order. As per the executive order for open meeting law, we are meeting remotely, be it the Zoom platform. We are also live streaming this to YouTube so that our public can watch our meeting in live time. We will start with our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America.
And to the republic.
Republic, for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God.
Visible.
Indivisible, liberty.
Justice.
Justice for all.
Thank you. As I mentioned, we are recording this meeting as well as live streaming it. And again, we appreciate all the assistance that Templeton Community TV gives us with that. I'm just gonna take a second to find the video so we can watch it and watch for comments if we have any. Okay, so the first order of business tonight is the approval of the meeting minutes of the July 29th, 2020 meeting. When someone's ready, I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes again of July 29th, 2020.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Mr. Marks. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second by Mrs. Mattson. Do I have any questions, comments? Anything on the, on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. The school committee unmute themselves, and I will do introductions in just a moment because I forgot that step, so I will do them momentarily. This is Robichaud.
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yeah.
Mr. Marks? Mr. Marks, you're muted, Jeff.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And Mrs. Hughes says yes. I'm also gonna announce that we just had Mrs. Trifilo and Mr. Mason just joined the meeting at 5:07. I'm gonna do introduction now since I skipped over that step, I apologize. For the school committee this evening, Mrs. Robichaud, Mrs. Chartier, Mrs. Mattson, Mr. Marks, Mrs. Trifilo, Mr. Mason, and myself, Mrs. Hughes. For the administration, Dr. Kazivan, our Assistant Superintendent Kate Kalis, our Business Manager, Emery Geister, our Facilities Director Rick Moulton, and our wonderful Administrative Assistant who keeps us all in line, Mrs. Varney. I also see on the screen, we have Lisa Parker from the NDEA here tonight. So welcome, everybody, and I apologize for skipping over that step. We did just for Mrs. Trifilo and Mr. Mason, we just approved the minutes from July 29th. So we're going to go down to the next set of minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 6th, 2020. Someone inclined to make a motion? Some move.
Some.
From Mrs. Mattson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who said second? Oh, Mrs. Mrs. Robichaud, sorry. Okay, any questions or comments on the minutes from August 6th? Seeing none, we'll do roll call. Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Coming.
Okay, so Mrs. Chartier's abstaining. Mrs. Mattson?
Yeah.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So that's one abstination. I guess that's how you pronounce that. And everyone else in favor, so the motion is approved to approve the minutes. Next up, bills and payroll. There is a bill and payroll report out there for review. I would entertain recommendation to accept the bills and payroll warrants as presented.
I'll move.
Okay, I think that was Mr. Mason. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second for Mrs. Mattson. Any questions or comments on any of the warrants that were posted? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote again. Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yeah.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that was unanimous. So tonight, we have, for an appearance, we have Rick Moulton, Rick Moulton, sorry, our Facilities Director of Buildings and Grounds. So I'd like to welcome Rick, and I'll turn it over first to Dr. Kazivan, if you'd like to say a few words first, and then you can formally introduce Mr. Moulton, and we can get an update on Buildings and Grounds.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure. I'm in chair. So Rick and his team, you know, a big part of what, what we need to do in terms of preparing for what school looks like in the hybrid, or quite frankly, in the remote, is much of, a lot of work has to be done and calibrated through our facilities. So, you know, I don't want to steal any of his thunder, for gosh sakes, but he and his team have been doing a lot of work with certainly changing out the, the air filters. We, we are, we are going to actually have a company come in to do airflow. There's signage, and you know, there's, there's a lot of things that need to take, to happen before we can actually have anyone in this building. And that's on top of what I will call regular and normal maintenance, just getting the building ready, just as we do every single year. Rick and his team primarily have been moving a lot of, a lot of stuff, quite, you know, because one of the directives is in order to put the number of kids that we can into a classroom, a lot of furniture, you know, and, and things need to come out. Well, you know, they, it has to go someplace, you know, we just can't leave it in hallways. We don't have huge storage rooms. So part of what we've, what part of the planning is that we, and I believe Rick will go into this a little bit more, but we probably got the last 10 or so mini storage, you know, containers, you know, probably on the East Coast to, you know, to utilize, to, to put stuff in, because we, it can only really be what you need in order to, you know, to, to sit kids. So he and his team have been working very hard. There's still a lot of work to do, but I will certainly just stop rambling, because Rick could actually give you some, some pertinent information on all things. So Rick Moulton, who's our Facilities Director, extraordinaire.
I'm just gonna say ditto, and we're good. No, it was, it was an interesting spring. Obviously, we had custodial staff that, at the initial outset of the COVID, we had to keep them home. Like a lot of people, we kept them home, but we did bring them back in, and we started our summer and spring maintenance early, which was nice to have a jumpstart. I mean, we have gone through and chemically stripped all the floors this year and waxed. They're, they've come out fantastic. I can't say enough about the, the staff. They've, they've been putting in, doing a good job getting it all cleared away. And then we ran into the situation of, you know, with the spacing that we have to do in the classrooms. I did bring in, and Dr. C wasn't far off when he said we might have the last 10 containers on the East Coast, because I had to get these out in New Jersey, down in our practice field by the wind turbine. We have 10 storage containers down there, and we are rapidly filling them up with extra desks, because we just don't have the storage space to put them in the schools. Think we're gonna be in very good shape when school does open in whatever form that it finally does open. As far as disinfecting, we have been doing deep cleaning on a regular basis of the building. I think one thing that helped us out was way before COVID started, we had the electrostatic sprayers, a couple in stock that we were able to pretty much keep ahead of the, the building disinfecting. I do have two more that are on order supposedly are coming in this week. We have plenty of the chemical that we're gonna use for disinfecting. We've, we've got PBEs, we've got wipes. All the custodians have been trained on, on the sprayers. I, I guess that's the main point of what we're all here, and that's why we're all in a Zoom meeting, is to prepare for what's coming down the road here, or what is here down the road. You know, as far as regular ma, regular maintenance is pretty much completed in the building, both here and the middle school and the elementary school. And now it's just getting ready for whatever, whatever happens with, with the opening. I'm not sure if anybody has any questions they'd like to ask me. Be more than happy to answer them if they, if they do.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes, um, Dr. Kazivan mentioned the airflow and a company coming in. Can you elaborate on what that is, especially in the middle school unit?
Yeah, I absolutely can, because I was asked this a couple of weeks ago, and I went through the specs of what we have. We have these McQuay ventilators in the high school and middle school. I got their cubic feet per minute off the spec sheets. I went through randomly, took about six or seven classrooms in each section of the building, middle school, high school, and elementary school on the different floors, measured their cubic footage, measured, measured what the airflow turnover rates were. The high school and middle school, I was asked if there was a 12 exchange per hour. The middle school actually has a 13.06 exchange rate per hour. The high school has a 13.89 exchange rate per hour. That's if the ventilators are left on, and we leave them on all the time, because they bring in fresh air. The elementary school has a much higher rate of exchange at 23.85 exchange rates per hour. I was also asked by Dr. C if we could actually measure these. I don't have the tech, I don't have the equipment to measure airflow. We have a contract with a company called Canistraro out of the, out of the Eastern Mass. They're, they're getting very, they're under, they're getting hired by a lot of schools in Central Mass. They've been very responsive when I've had any issues with the HVAC systems. I had their rep, Dr. C asked me yesterday if we could check these, you know, actual air flows. I had the rep in here this morning. They're coming in next week with equipment to actually test the air flows. I think, I feel we're in pretty good shape. We have changed all our filters, which we do anyways on a regular basis. They were all changed within the last five to six weeks, and we change those on a regular basis anyways. But I think we're gonna be in very good shape for the airflow exchange rates. I think we're good.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other specific questions for Mr. Moulton? The only question that I have, Rick, is I know we have regular maintenance and things. So one, I'm just gonna start up front and say to please send our thanks out to your team, because I know that if, if the floors are done to even half of what they were last year, they're gonna look fabulous. And I know they, they do a lot of work getting the schools ready to reopen. So please make sure that you send that message out, that we appreciate everything they've done. Have there been any other large projects that we've undertaken that may not be COVID-related that we should be aware of?
Well, I think the major projects, we didn't really have any major projects this year. I mean, last, you know, a year ago, we, we changed out all the 3,600 light bulbs to LEDs. You know, obviously, the bleachers is two years, two years gone by now. We're in good shape as far as the building goes. We didn't have any major expenditures that we had to cough up, so to speak, this year. It's been pretty much just, I think we've gone above them, you know, I'm not saying above and beyond, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying we have gone into more deep cleaning this year than may perhaps we've done in the past. I mean, is, is, like I say, if you walk through the building now, if you walk through the building, while we still got a little bit of waxing to do in lobby areas, but I think you're gonna, they pop. They're very, very clean this year. We didn't really have any major problems. We did just have new scoreboards installed that, that were under contract quite a while ago in the high school gym and stuff. That, we didn't do that, but we had a company that installed them. But yeah, we really didn't have any major projects here at the school that we had done to take. It seems like we accomplished most of that over the last three or four years.
It's probably good, though, since we had to focus on these other things. So, yeah. Okay, and I'll throw it out once again. Does anyone else at the, on the school committee have any comments? Mrs. Varney? Yeah.
Just, there's a question that came up on the livestream.
Yes, okay, and actually, I will, I'll read that off. It's from Julie Dean. And the question is, there air conditioning in the high school, middle school now? I remember it getting very hot in the classrooms a few years ago, and the teachers putting box fans in the windows to cool the rooms. I think I know the answer, but I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mr. Moulton.
Yeah. No, unfortunately, we do not have air conditioning in the classrooms in, in high school, middle school. If there are students with medical needs, we do have portable air conditioners that we can move into the rooms, and, and we have done that, and we do do that. But to have the whole building air conditioned, it's not presently air conditioned.
Thank you. Right, anything else? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mason, yes.
Just the conditions of the roofs, especially in the middle school. Can you give any kind of update on that, or what we project we'll have to do in the near future?
I'm sorry. I, I think as, as I, I probably said last year, I think a year ago, I said probably, and we're looking at five to eight years, where we're gonna have to do some, probably some re-roofing of the middle school. The leaks that we had when I first came on a few years back, not to repeat myself, but we had a company come in and address all the leaks in the building, and knock on wood someplace, those have held very well. We're not running around mopping up and, you know, fixing leaks. But that being said, I think we're in a, in a situation where probably in four to five years, we're gonna have to start looking at re-roofing sections of the building, yes.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Chartier?
Rick, working in a school district myself, I just wanna say thank you, because I can't imagine having your job. Not right now.
Sometimes I can either.
Rick, I can.
Yes.
All right. Any, any other questions or comments from, from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Rick. I, I will ask you to stick around with us. I think you, you know, we're gonna talk about reopening and other things. So I think having you on, if there's any targeted questions, you know, we may look to you for some answers. So it'd be great if you could stick around with us.
Be happy to.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Our next section is public input. I don't believe, we checked earlier, but I wanted to just double check and make sure nothing's come in. So I don't see any public input. I see Mrs. Varney shaking her head, no. We will keep a, an eye on that chat stream to see if questions come in. We will attempt to answer what we can, but we always take note of what's there. So if you do put something in that chat stream, and we don't get to it during the meeting, we will try to follow up with you after the fact. We'll go next to the NDEA, and I see Mrs. Parker here.
Hi. Actually, everybody's been, you know, waiting to hear about the plans to our school, and Eric and I have been working closely with Dr. Kazivan and Kate Kalis to try to come up with that plan and have, you know, put some things out there. And we met yesterday for quite some time, and I think they have a pretty good plan to go back to school. So now it's a matter of just finalizing that MOU and seeing what happens with that. But we feel pretty positive about it.
Great. Right, well, once again, you know, pass our thanks along to everybody who's been working very hard and diligently through this whole process. We certainly appreciate all the efforts that everyone has been putting in. So please pass.
And Eric, Eric isn't here tonight, but he is just, he's incredible. That man just must drink, sleep, eat, and everything from the time he wakes up till the time he goes to bed. So he needs a little break.
I'm glad he's getting one. I hope he's doing something. Great, thank you. Next, we have the FY21 budget status. Mrs. Geister did put a spreadsheet out there for a quick view. I know there's not much on it, because we're only one month in, and that was just a cash flow report, and that was something that we were going to start including. So I don't know, Mrs. Geister, if you wanted to say anything about that?
That's just showing our 1/12 where we are. Everything that we don't spend up to our limit in one month carries to the next. So the summer months help prepare us for those first payrolls in September and October by not spending as much. So I just wanted to show you where we're at.
Great. Did anybody have any questions on that? I'm sure that as these next couple of months go through, and we start seeing more expenses, we may have more questions. But did anybody have anything at this point? Okay, I don't see anybody. As far as FY21 budget, just a couple of things. We, as you said, we're in 1/12, because we don't have an approved budget. Phillipsden has scheduled their special town meeting for August 27th at 7:00 PM, and the assessment to the town from the district is on that special town meeting warrant, plus they have some other business that they're, they're handling for the town. So I just wanted to let everybody know that that has been scheduled, just from a procedure standpoint. If our assessment is passed at that point, we'll have an approved budget, and Dr. Kazivan and Emery Geister will alert Desi that that is the case, and then we move forward. If it doesn't pass, then we will reconvene at our next meeting, which we have scheduled for September 2nd anyway, and decide where to go from there. And it could potentially lead us to a district-wide town meeting. So we'll, we'll take that step once we know what happens on August 27th, and that's, I believe, next Thursday. Now, Dr. Kazivan, did you want to add anything to the FY21 budget status update at this point?
And so I think that the, the big takeaway with the commissioners' report today is that they're, you know, they understand that, you know, that the tuition rates are not, not posted. You know, we're still asking questions in regards to circuit breaker, and, you know, all signs lead, you know, or point to that those will be funded at the, if nothing else, this, you know, the same level. You know, we've, we're still in the, we still don't have an actual FY21 budget, as everyone knows. We're still in the extended budget or the, that get the governor put in place a couple of months ago. So the outlook in terms of what they talked a lot about today was that there was a thought there would be a fourth stimulus, which would then possibly affect schools, municipalities, et cetera. That, that doesn't seem to, that doesn't seem to be, you know, as, as rosy as it did say a couple of weeks ago. So obviously, if we watching the news, those talks have stalled. You know, so I, you know, the, the grants that we have applied for and have received have been, you know, a breath of fresh air. We could never have bought, say, you know, 17,000 masks, like, as, as, you know, we needed to do for, as an example. But what's concerning is that one of our more important, or at least a couple of them are time-sensitive, meaning that they, you know, that the spending needs to be done by December 31st in one, which that's fine, but others, that the monies, although there's plenty of money, like I'm talking about the COVID relief, or the, the FEMA MEMA monies, are the same thing in terms of the money is there, but they're only giving you until December 31st to spend that. So we're hopeful, all of us are hopeful, that they extend the spending timeline, not, this is, the money is already there. We just would like more time to be able to spend the monies, as an example. And I, and I talked about this last time we spoke, but other than that, it's really, you know, I don't think this is good or bad, but it's just status quo. And we are just purchasing and getting ready for when we act, you know, we have students and staff in the building.
Great. Anyone have any comments on FY21 at this point? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next topic, which is a reopening plan update. So I will turn it over to you, Dr. Kazivan, and I'm sure that Kate, you'll be jumping in, and we'll hear where things are going.
So last time, we left our heroes. We needed to vote, or you needed to vote and to approve, you know, the actual plan that would be submitted to the state, so the la, you know, the, the second part of that. And really, that, that information was honestly just the, the framework. It wasn't, it was just really the nuts and bolts of the, of the plan, what the state needed to make a decision whether or not our plan was viable. We did receive feedback. We completed our, you know, we, although our feedback came late, meaning that we had already made the corrections prior, but we've, we've sorted all that out, and we have a solid plan. On our website is, you know, a more user-friendly plan. It's the same plan, but it's just, it's presented in a little bit different way on the COVID page, quite frankly, and all the information that you could possibly want is, or I hope, are there. So we, you know, that really was the plan. The second part of it was, and it's been ongoing. We just talked about facilities, but the purchasing of materials, logistics between buses and cohorts, and all the information went out to students, families about what cohort they were in, either A or B. As we discussed, that was primarily based on families. So we tried, we, we kept families together, and then we, you know, then we, then we filled in behind that. I know that certainly there were, I don't know that there was a lot of emails, you know, saying, gee, I didn't get a, you know, a cohort designation. There were a few here and there, and I know that that was taken care of. So that was really our next big step, was to identify what the cohorts were. We, you know, in, I guess in the same breath is the, the folks whom are, have decided because of health reasons or concerns to remotely educate their children. And since we last spoke, again, the survey was still, you know, in place. But I believe, I, I think we said something around 160 roughly the last time we spoke, and I think we're up around 260, 259 across the district. And that's K through 12, obviously. And if, if I wish that, I did have an average, but it's roughly, on an average, about 20, 21 kids per grade. Some are bigger, some are smaller, but on the average, about 20 some odd students per grade. And that information does still kind of trickle in. Those numbers change a little bit here and there, although I think that the majority of it is, you know, is, you know, we've, we've passed that point. We're still receiving, well, in terms of, you know, an uptick, we certainly have received far more homeschool plans than we have, you know, in any particular time. We, we were roughly over, over the years, around 50, 52 homeschool students, as, as a general rule. We're up to around 75, 76, 77 in, in that area, and they kind of, they still kind of trickle in. And so, you know, we'll be around, at least right now, around 70, like I said, 75, 76 total kids. You know, that certainly, I want to say it out loud, is that, you know, what you have to do in order to homeschool your child is you have to un-enroll your child, right? So you are un-enrolled from the district, and, you know, we're, you do have to submit a plan of, of an educational plan, which needs to be approved. How that will play out, you know, for us is that that'll be, well, grand total 75, but 24, 25 more than we had last year. Those kids will not be factored into our foundation enrollment. Again, foundation enrollment, all the students who are of school age that go to a public school, whether they're here or otherwise. But what's not counted in foundation enrollment of our special private schools and homeschools, and there's some other examples. So, you know, well, we won't know the impact of that, quite frankly, until next year. We just won't, because as of October 1, they take the picture, and that affects, you know, what the, either the portment or in terms of the state for foundation, they'll, you know, that's, that's how that will play out. And we don't, we won't know that until obviously next year. So that we are still seeing that, you know, take place. What we're gearing up for, and quite frankly, before I talk about PD, I want to talk about communication. So, you know, what we're trying to do, it, you know, I was quoted in the paper, is what's the hardest part of this thing. And I jokingly said everything, but it's, it's really about giving folks information as quickly as they need it, but making sure that it's correct, because so many things have changed. And we, we, we had, without exaggeration, this will come out later, we had five changes. exaggeration, this will come out later, we had five changes to some definitions, you know, from Desi today. They're going to send that out via slide, but just like what is close contact? What is it? You know, some of these things are still changing, which changes protocols, it changes many. So we're trying to keep up and not give folks bad information, or, or, you know, has been really the challenge. So we're trying to communicate as much as possible. We'll, you'll see a heck of a lot more communication moving forward as we start rolling out, okay, school will be starting, you know, everyone knows the 14th, the busing is, you know, is on its way. In, but we'll, we'll start really start pushing out information there. Are really our next big rock that we've been tackling, and I'll let Kate speak to this, but is the professional development for the, and again, I want to be clear, yes, for the teachers, of course, right to the next, well, starting on the 27th, 10 days of it. But about how we're going to teach the kids and how we're going to teach the parents, quite frankly, or our community as we move forward. So I'm going to just turn that over to Kate and she can speak to that more succinctly.
Sure. So we've worked with teachers and the union. We had gotten a lot of feedback later, late in the spring before we completed our school year last year from teachers around what kind of PD they felt would be helpful to deliver effective remote instruction. And then the union recently did a survey of teachers, which in large part confirmed the topics that we felt that teachers had already communicated to us. So we're developing the 10 days that we have at the beginning of year for professional development to prepare teachers for the new way that we're going to be conducting schools. So even though we're in hybrid, there's of course some students that are in person and some students that are remote and teachers. There are different platforms and so forth that teachers will be using and that they want to feel, you know, proficient in. So we have some in-district expertise. We're bringing in some expertise from outside in certain areas and some self-paced work as well. And it's all a part of a matrix of professional development over those 10 days that gives teachers some things that we feel that teachers must do and some things that they have options to do depending on their personal needs, and then a lot of flexibility for them. So I feel like the way that we're developing the PD is really meeting the needs of the teachers, both for the, their voice in what they need in order to do the great job that they're already doing, but to continue to do that and deepen their own skill as well as, you know, some things that, that we need as a district in order to make it coherent across the, across the grades so that it looks streamlined, a little more streamlined to families. So that's, that's going very well. We're almost in the final stages of that.
So ultimately, we're, you know, we're in the final stretch. You know, and we are, you know, we're, we're finalizing a, a lot of different things. I think Rick touched upon, you know, PPE and those type of fighters and all of those things, you know, and, you know, again, shout out to Emery and her crew, because those things just don't appear. And they have to be ordered and they have to be, and you have to, you know, have to be like a, you know, a shopping expert. And we are all battling each other to get these, these items. It's very competitive. And so, you know, they've, they've, I think that we've, we started early. And we're that, we're benefiting from that, but also we're just dogged in some of those things that we know are going to, you know, are going to improve. You know, this, this situation. The other part I also want to say is the area superintendent's also had a, a call with the Hayward Hospital Executive Team. And they, they basically asked us, you know, how can we assist? In what ways can we work together? And we, we, we talked about a lot of things, you know, some of the low hanging fruit for us was, you know, just how to dawn and duff PPE. Appropriate mask fittings, which is, which is, you know, a part of it. Testing has come up. You know, how can we, you know, is there a possibility of us testing, you know, teachers, you know, if they felt? And so those things, you know, we've got an ongoing dialogue with them about that and we'll, you know, we actually talked about ventilation. You know, we, we asked a lot of different questions because the hospital was really the first, you know, large organization that had to stay open for obvious reasons. And they, you know, there's a, there's a, a lot of information that they, that they've probably almost forgotten. You know, because they've been doing this for so long and a lot of it just was just real basic questions from us. But we think that we're going to be able to partner very nicely, the area districts with Hayward Hospital. If for nothing else, just training, but certainly someone to call when we have a question about almost anything. So I, I want to make sure I, I, I put a shout out to that because that was, that was a, you know, that was a great conversation and we'll be leaning on them, you know, pretty heavy.
There was a question that came on the feed that I'm from Carmine in Wrigleyo. I apologize if I pronounce that wrong, asking about remote learning and are local teachers providing the remote learning? So I'm hoping that maybe you can get an update of where we are with.
So our remote learning is going to be, and we've said this, you know, I've, you know, a couple of different, you know, in a couple of different ways and a couple of different junctions. Yes, you know, our local teachers are going to do a portion of the remote learning. There's going to be a portion of that remote learning that's going to have to be, you know, supported by what we'll call an educational platform, Ingenuity, something to that effect. You know, to what extent and exactly who and where and how and all those type of things. Well, you know, we know how. But we, we're still working that out, you know, whatever the percentage break is, we'll, we'll see. I know that folks have contacted me concerned with screen time. And I, and I absolutely agree 100% with their concerns. You know, when you're, when you're educating remotely, that's the, it, screen time is the only mode in which we're able to educate. So yeah, screen time will certainly be a factor and we're going to try to mitigate that as best as we can. But it's, it's really our only avenue, because what, what was a lot, the big part of the feedback when March, April, May happened was that, look, I can't be responsible for educating my own child. I have to work. I have to, you know, this is just not what I do. And we took that very seriously and we, and, and we all understand that. And so we've, we've put things in place so that certainly real life human beings that they're, that they know, our teaching staff will be part of it, but there's going to have to be a, a component that will be, you know, utilizing Ingenuity or some type of other platform to either strengthen, you know, or, or instruct, depending on the grade level, of course. So there'll be a combination thereof. If they're asking exactly how many hours and what will be taught, what? That's going to be very detailed as you go by grade and grade level. And so we're still, we're still working that out because we're still working out staffing as well.
Great, thank you. Kate? You're, you're muted. You're, you're muted, Kate.
Kate, muted.
Sorry. Okay, I want to echo what Dr. Cassavant said, but I also want to add to that, that we're, we have a pretty solid plan that at least for middle and high school, there is going to be significant amount of screen time because if you're learning remotely, either because of choice or because you're not in your in-person couple of days, you'll be following the same schedule and live streaming with your class and with your teacher at middle and high school. At elementary, we know that, and, and of course, we're concerned about screen time, but to a certain extent, we're between a rock and a hard place. So the other part of it is that if there are courses that we can't offer because of staffing at the high school, we might use a Dr. Cassavant or middle school, we might use a platform like Ingenuity where the child takes that particular course online. At elementary, we're going to try to target our own staff as much as possible to be doing the online learning with the students, but it won't be the 100% synchronous day similar to middle and high because the younger students clearly, that's, that's too much. But the teachers who are tasked with being responsible for the remote learning will be planning in common with the grade level teachers to make sure that what's delivered is comparable to the remote students as well as the in-person. And of course, in middle and high, there will be some cases where it's more teacher-directed as well with a separate teacher, but there is going to be synchronous learning following the schedule for middle and high.
Great, thank you.
Margaret, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, actually, I'm not sure who it would be, Chris or Kate. So I'll just throw it out there. We've talked a lot about the professional development for the staff and everything. With the students coming back both remotely and in person, you know, we've had a lot of changes with the busing, the lunches, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on with social distancing. Do we have a plan in place for the students to, you know, to, to teach them, you know, the simple things, putting on a mask? I mean, how to stand in line, how to social distance, things like that. Do we have a plan in place for that?
Yes, we do. Funny you should mention that because one of the projects we've nearly completed this week is that we have a set of lessons from kindergarten through 12 on important safety topics. Those topics include mask wearing, how to behave on the bus, how to walk in the hallways, what social distancing means and looks like, how to use the bathroom because we need, you know, one person at a time. So there's a list of six or eight, or, you know, eight-ish, eight to 10 lessons that we've, oh, how, how we're going to handle arrival and dismissal procedures from the bus. So there's a list of important safety topics and what we've done is we've developed those lessons with common expectations for K to 12. And part of what teachers are going to do in their first 10 days is take the delivery portion of how they deliver the lesson and maybe tailor it a little bit to I'm teaching this to a seven-year-old as opposed to I'm teaching it to a 17-year-old. But the expectations themselves are going to be the same so that wherever you go in the district, the expectation about mask wearing is the same. We're even having posters around what those expectations are that'll be throughout the district. So, so I feel like we've got that covered.
Thank you, Kate. Who is delivering them? Is it, is it going to actually be the teachers that are delivering those? Are they like in a dissemble? The teachers? Excellent. Thank you, Kate.
Yeah, teachers will deliver them. It's really, when you do something like that, it's best to do it in a small group. So the lessons aren't, I'm telling you what the expectations are. The lessons are, I'm telling you what the expectations are. I'm modeling what it looks like to meet these expectations. I'm having students model what it looks like to meet these expectations. We're, we're talking about that. So it's, it's really a process of not just listening to it, but this is what your mask should look like. Let's, let's all do this. Let's make sure, you know. So teachers will deliver those in smaller, you know, in smaller groups. And part of what we'll do, and it's already scheduled in, in fact, in those 10 days is teachers will have one chunk of time where they, as I described, meet as a team to tailor the delivery of the lesson to the age group, but the expectations stay the same. And then a separate time where they meet as a building and talk about, okay, how are we rolling out these lessons? What's our schedule? When are we doing them specifically in the first few days and so forth? So teachers will have a lot of voice in that, but the expectations will be universal.
Thank you, Kate.
This is Triple O.
Yes, for parents in line with that, I understand that the policy would have to be looked at and communicated to parents. Can that get done in some fashion? So it's a small group? Because the parents have, also have expectations that their child follow those procedures that are taught in the school. So, and there's consequences if, if they don't. And I would, I would hope that maybe like you could have a Zoom meeting of all first grade parents and talk in a smaller group about if and what happens when these things are not followed. And then maybe second grade and third grade, or how will that be communicated?
I, you know, so that's part of the plan. And what I mean by that is that it's that the, there's a community, you know, education piece. I think that we're going to try to roll out that information in several different, several different mediums, you know, obviously we're, you know, the Zoom meetings are a, a great way. We've talked about videos, you know, that kind of, that kind of thing, you know, pre-recording something. So these things are live, because one of the, one of the things we, you know, we, we are, I think we had a tremendous showing when we did our, our community forums. I think I, I would have to, I defer to TCTV, but I, I, I forget how many folks actually tuned in on both, but it's quite a few. But there was, there was quite a few who did not. So, you know, I went on for an hour and a half to, you know, twice on that day. And to find your specific question, we put up FAQs, which we'll do again. We're going to try to think a little bit different. I, I will say though, anything that we have, like these, these plans themselves, for example, will, will be on the COVID cage on the website. And I think that what I'm, what I'm, what we've all been trying to really do is push all of us, right? Quite frankly, is to the website. First check there, you know, is there something there that at least can, you know, you can look at and, and certainly we'll, you know, we'll go into more depth, but where we're, what we're trying to do is not handle questions necessarily via email or by Facebook, when, you know, there, it's right there on the, on the, on the webpage. And we're certainly not trying to be rude. We don't want to, you know, certainly, I'm, we've engaged hundreds of questions every week. But we're, we, we really are trying to say, please, please check, it's, you know, the information is on the, on the webpage. Please let us know if you should have any questions, for example, because we're trying to get folks to really go there first. And if, and if it's not, if it's not satisfactory, then certainly let us know. We are still going to do the things that we do. But we, you know, again, we're starting to really push the fact that anything that we have will be on that website. And probably, you know, and if it's not great, then it's a good thing for us to, to, you know, to correct. But the answer to that is yes, but the information first is on the website. We want to push people there to, 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 you know, go there and investigate it.
Yeah, I, I, I'm concerned that they understand, as we do when we go into stores, they say no masks, no entrance. But we're three feet apart, not six. So those masks that are worn by those kids are very necessary. They can't be played with and they can't be followed sometime and not some others because it's putting other people at risk. So I, I think, I think that is something that, yeah, they'll see the website, but it really has to be said and communicated because if, you know, if not, then they say, oh, well, I didn't know this was going to happen if they did this or they, and especially in a bus where you have all the kids and one bus driver. I'm granted, we don't have all the kids anymore because the bus only has, what, half of the amount? But, you know, there's only one bus driver. So, and those masks are supposed to be worn. So.
Yeah. So, yeah, we're definitely going to do our best and we're going to, through policy, as we sat through last night on several of these topics. They'll be supported by policy, you know, many of the topics that we've talked about here. They'll be in the handbooks. They'll be, again, they'll be in a lot of places for folks to access and to review, but, you know, more is always better. And we'll, you know, we're.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was muted. I have two questions. The first one is, I know we discussed lunch the last time we met. And I was just wondering if we're getting any sort of additional guidance or hearing discussions about lunch. And I'm specifically concerned with the population who may choose remote learning, so they're not coming in at all. And, you know, how we're handling that, I didn't know. I haven't heard or seen any, any chatter about it. And I wasn't sure if, if perhaps you had heard anything through the commissioners' meetings at this point regarding the lunch program.
So yes and no. It really hasn't changed much. I think that the, there is a push to change the designation in mass for, when I say free lunch, but generally. there is a push to change the designation in mass for, when I say um, free lunch, but generally to, uh, which they did a little bit over this, like, uh, this spring, had to think about what season that was. The districts are, we are trying, all of us are trying to figure out, how do we, you know, uh, how do we figure that out for folks who are home? I have to tell you that um, in terms of reimbursement and all of those things that are important, um, many of those might be considered extra runs. So I think that, I, I think I said this last, I can't remember when I, we talked about this last, I remember talking about it at some point. Is I think that we, uh, we, we need to figure out the bus runs first, because that's going to be very tricky. And then what we need to do is, is see if there's an availability or, or some type of way we can, um, making the lunches, I have to tell you, making the lunches is less concerning than if folks need them delivered. Quite, quite frankly, uh, because we're just not gonna have, I don't think the opportunity, although we can use the existing bus runs that we do have leaving at, you know, in the middle of the afternoon to, to drop off and to do those type of things. But if you're not on the route, you know, for example, you know, or if it's, you know, it's this stop and not this stop, and I can't take my, you know, I can't take my children a half a block down here to walk as it's day, we're just gonna have to, you know, we may not be able to overcome all of that. Um, just given the fact that we do have to get kids home, we can't delay bus runs and make multiple stops. And so it's on our, it's on our radar, it's important to us, but I think first we have to figure out the runs. We have to figure out how we're going to pick up and deliver kids and then figure out, okay, how do we do meals and if we can do meals?
Thank you. Um, I hope they, they come up with some, some sort of guidance or help. Um, because we do have a population of students, you know, food insecurity is real.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Addressed, so. Um, the second question I had, and I don't expect an answer because I know guidance just came out yesterday and today, is sports. Um, I, what I'd like is for our next meeting on September 2nd, maybe to have some, a lengthier presentation on sports and what it means based upon the directives that just came out from uh, the joint release from Desi and the MIA Today who voted on, I believe, September 18th could start the fall season. Um, certain sports can't play, but maybe they can practice. Um, and all, what that means, and as I said, I know it just came out, so it's really, no one's had time to digest it. So if I could ask that, that gets on the agenda for next, our next meeting, and we can see what that means.
Um, absolutely. And I will say that a lot of it has been teased out. I know there's a lot to do in terms of scheduling and those type of things, but that's really, you know, that's really kind of behind the scenes. I, I think the important thing that the school committee needs to consider potentially, and we'll, we'll learn a little bit more, although we're getting some guidance tomorrow on this. Um, it's, it's in the literature i- in a sense that if you are full remote and you are in a, uh, you're in a district that is unshaded, meaning it's, there's, um, there are no, you know, there's, it's not a hotspot. Then, school committees are gonna have to make that decision um, to whether or not allow students to play sports. That also uh, transcends um to students whom, because folks are worried uh, in regards to uh, the health of their child, um, are, will they be allowed to play sports and be educated in, if you're in hybrid? And um, for medical reasons or concerns, I should say, your, your child is, is remotely learning, whether or not um, they should play sports. So that is a major conversation right now. Um, it's, it's in the literature. Um, the school committee, um, from, you know, from our understanding, will need to, to decide on that, vote on that. And uh, either way, if you think about it, you know, if we were, you know, if we were full remote or if, you know, you have children. So I think that that is something that needs to be, you know, discussed and vetted. Um, the commissioner was clearly concerned um, that if you have children who are being kept at home, because no one is assuming anything other than uh, that if your child is home because you're concerned about the, 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 the well, you know, your, uh, their child's health, pardon me. Um, that, that if you're going to play a sport, you are definitely going to come, you have a greater chance of coming into contact, close contact, etc., droplets, the whole bit. Um, you know, playing a sport, then you are going to come into contact um, in school, three or six feet, wearing masks and the whole, you know, the, everything that we've talked about. He was, he was, you know, he, he spent a good three or four minutes on that topic just alone, because that's, you know, in sense that it'd be hard to convince him that that they truly feel that unsafe. That's the commissioner. I'm just simply saying that it does, you know, those are the kind of things that, um, that he's, that they, I shouldn't say he, they have put to local control, um, which of course, you know, are you, so.
Um, anyone have any other questions or comments at this point about the reopening plans? Okay, I don't see anyone at this point. Um, obviously, as we go through the rest of the agenda, if something comes up, you know, just raise your hand and we'll, we'll come back. So with that being said, we'll move on to our next agenda item. First off, thank you for that update and thank you once again to yourself and Kate and Anne Marie and everybody else. Um, you know, Rick, Susan, and everybody for the work that's gone into putting these plans together, making the school safe and getting us ready to reopen um, for the teachers for when they come back and then again to the students. So it is appreciated, the level of attention that everyone's giving to this and how serious we're taking it um, to ensure that we can do so safely. So thank you once again. Um, with that, we'll go on to the business manager's report. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Geister if you have a few words to say on the reports that are out there.
Um, very few. There's not much to report on at the moment. Um, if you notice, the grants aren't there. We're still in the process of applying for all of the new ones yet, so those aren't set up. There's nothing, nothing been spent on them because they're not even applied for yet. Um, we do have all of our entitlement amounts, so those will be submitted um, within the next um, seven days. The the spending for the one month, it, it was much clearer when you looked at it further up, when you saw the 112th number. Um, we're trying to spend the bare minimum so that we can save it for payroll in the fall.
Anyone have any questions or comments on the financials? Okay, seeing none at this time, we'll move on to school committee comments. If um, there's any comments the school committee um, would like to make at this point. Okay, and seeing none, um, we'll move on. Surplus items, there are no surplus items to put forth tonight. Um, we will probably have a large list, uh, either at our next meeting or the one that's following um, with some items. So we'll get ready for that for when it, when that is ready. Uh, other items not reasonably anticipated by the chair within 48 hour, 48 hours. I don't know of any that we need to address this evening that can't wait until our next meeting. So I am going to turn it over to Dr. Kazavant. There are four or five things in his superintendent report. Um, we'll get an enrollment or school choice update, which I assume is probably not gonna be too lengthy, but we'll talk about staffing. We also wanted to talk about the MSBA and also any updates that, if we've had any, and I don't know if we have on the regional agreement amendment committee. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Kazavant.
So, uh, I would think that right off the bat of what I was going to, and, you know, some of this has already been discussed, but certainly uh, we don't have, um, and we don't until the end, and I know that we're within a week of it. But until the end of August, we don't, we don't take the first, you know, look at at our, what kids are here, because we don't know. Um, you know, generally, we start doing this projectives, and then once the kids are actually in seats, we figure out, okay. And then by September, we, we get an idea. But we, you know, right now, there's a, we have kids coming in, we have kids going, just as a typical school year, um, because people have to enroll. I told you that, you know, one of the, one of the outliers, I think, and certainly talked about this last week, is that we've already talked about the home, um, homeschool, and those numbers have gone up by 25, 26 students as, you know, to date. We, you know, school choice, we will be far below the numbers that we had last year because we did not take any, I think, except for six, I think, at the, pardon me, kindergarten. Um, and, you know, so there's been some movement on that. The, you know, I, I think that we'll, we'll see. What I'm, the concerns, as I will say, anytime I'm given the opportunity, is our foundation enrollment. I've already spoke about, that will look like, um, ultimately going forward, uh, because that's, you know, certainly how, how we, you know, receive money. Um, how we, you know, and so I, we'll see how this all works out, pans out, but we'll know, obviously, in October, but we still have, you know, influx of kids coming and going. Because, you know, life, life goes on. Um, people move in, people move out. And we'll have a, we'll have an idea at the end of next week, but certainly as September, we, we get kids in seats and do, start doing enrollments, um, we'll, we'll know more. Um, so, okay, the other part is, is lengthy, and I have to say to you that I've, um, the MSBA, um, I, I, so I've had two interactions with the MSBA the, uh, since March. And uh, the first interaction was, I, I wanna say around March 12th-ish and March 10th-ish or something. And there was an article, I believe in the Athol Daily News, that um, that purported that there was information that was um, related to a, a member, you know, a Phillipston uh, community member. Um, and that was used as, I would say, fodder for this, you know, for this conversation that was, that was recorded and of course, written about in the Athol Daily News. Um, and so that prompted me to contact the MSBA and certainly uh, Templeton did as well, because it had, it had to do about reimbursement um, for the Templeton Elementary School. Um, and again, COVID happened. Um, it certainly didn't, you know, just because COVID happened, phones were still working, people were, you know, receiving emails. It was slower than usual. Uh, but we did, you know, we did engage in a conversation about where did this information actually, uh, you know, uh, was information given? What was the information? Who gave it? Um, at first, it was, it was couched as it was, uh, you know, public information request, but public information requests, as we know, have to be written. Um, you have to submit information, you have to submit a request for those type of things. So it was, it was kind of, it was kind of, uh, it was cloudy, let's put it that way. So, um, I was asked to write a narrative as to the reconfiguration of Templeton Elementary School, um, uh, which of course brought the fifth grade up to the middle school, which reassigned all the kids from Phillipston. And, and so I've done this, honestly, probably two or three times um, since uh, over the last couple of years. I then received a week and a half ago, or two weeks ago now, um, a, an email to from Diane Sullivan, uh, who's the communications um, person to give her a call. And I, I thought at that moment in time that uh, what they were going to talk to me about is of course, the, you know, the issue that I just spoke about. Um, it was not. What happened is that they Diane entertained a phone call um, from two members of Phillipston, two committee members. And a person literally identified as a neighbor. Um, and during this conversation, they, um, they purported, they, you know, purportedly, they said that they're, that the school committee and the, and or the superintendent acted um, out of their, um, out of bounds, so to speak. Uh, you know, far beyond the purview to, you know, students and what they were, what they were looking for is information is that, um, that this was a violation of the PFA for, for Templeton. Um, and, and they wanted to see what the ramifications were from that. And without going into detail, because what I'm, ultimately, the conversation was cut short. Um, there was some, there were some inconsistencies as, in terms of who was who. Um, but again, this was, you know, on a Templeton matter, um, a Phillipston resident uh, residents were, were inquiring. That prompted them to call me to let me know this um, and, and ask me some questions about uh, you know, the reconfiguration. Now, again, I go back to the fact that I, I've sent them multiple reports, um, and lengthy diatribes on why and how and all of these type of things. And they've requested that information again. Um, but this time they wanted to write to, uh, with a couple of things is what, what authority was given? What authority did we act under? I acted or the school committee acted. And um, and they wanted me to ask specifically what their implications are for the PFA or for the grant to Templeton Elementary. So what that's done is that I've, you know, after that conversation, I certainly communicated that um, to Templeton, a select board, uh, pardon me, through the um, the town administrator, because that is the agreement of, if anything dealing with MSBA needs to be communicated. And I'm in the process of writing this report. I guess, um, I, I, I don't know what to call it, quite frankly, a summary, a report um, with the, with the required information. Um, but what will come with that is a narrative of the conversation between Diane Sullivan and I. And um, there was a legal representative from the MSBA as well uh, on the phone call uh, to, to try to, you know, uh, kind of sort out the matter. Um, you will, I, I'm, I'm in the process of, of talking with Mars to, to get some information that I need for the, um, for the submission. Um, with that will come a narrative of the conversation that I've just kind of just, you know, that I've just talked about with Diane. I will say that what I, what I reminded the MSBA through Diane was that the initial question has yet to be answered. The district, Templeton through the district formally requested information as to what information was given, was the information that was in the Athol Daily News back in March, correct? Um, if so, who gave that information? Um, and why wasn't Templeton notified? Why wasn't Templeton given that information, just if nothing else, as a, as a courtesy? Given that it's their loan, it's their money. Uh, it's, it's, it's their business, so to speak. Um, I did remind Diane, and just as a point, is that when I spoke to the MSBA back in March, I did not speak to Diane Sullivan, I spoke to another person. Um, so they, I, I said, I still need to report out. Uh, that's still, it's still active. They're still going to require both the school committee and the Templeton Board of Selectmen that information. Um, I bring this all up because, one, I wanna make sure that, uh, that the school committee is informed. You will receive a, the written report along with my narrative um, about the conversation. Uh, but I, again, you know, this is the, this is what we've, you know, we've had to do over the last, you know, three, four, five months, I guess. And I don't know the answer to the questions because I guess that's what my letter will then spur, is a formal letter back from the MSBA as to, as to these questions. One, by the, the configuration changing, what does it do to the grant? Two, what authority do, you know, did we have um, to do what we did? Um, just as, as an aside, I've already spoke to Desi. Um, as everyone here knows that the, you know, much of what we are governed by is the regional agreement. Um, the school committee, they, Desi asked me if we followed the regional agreement, and I most certainly did. And we provided those type of minutes, etc. So I'm not quite sure, other than just to report out all this information, because you might say, well, okay, then what? I don't know. I'm simply communicating, you know, these conversations that I've had now with the MSBA. I, I'm going to rewrite the report in the form and the format that they request with the questions that they're asking me to ask them, so that they can give me the answer, which I, I have to say is is interesting. And so I will have that to the school committee and of course, to the Templeton Board of Selectmen within the week, um, because I'm still waiting on some information from Mars. Um, but anyway, I, I, I guess I don't have much more to say unless you've got some questions. I'm just literally reporting out really since March, these, these conversations that have been, you know, they've, they've been spaced because of, you know, the opportunity, but that's, that's where we're at.
This is Mattson.
Yeah, um, so I didn't read the articles in the Athol Daily News. I honestly have no idea what you're talking about. So, um, is this something that, um, that you could send us some information so we can kind of read through this, or?
Well, you're, you're going to receive my narrative that the Well, you're, you're going to receive my narrative that the, uh, that the MSBA has requested. They're questioning, there are many questions, right? And you wrapped up in what I've just said in terms of both from Phillipston and from Templeton. I believe what Templeton is, is suggesting, um, is that, uh, that, that students were moved out of that building without the authority to do so. And that, you know, that's certainly one of the, that was certainly one of the prevailing questions that came to Diane Sullivan from the MSBA, this both times, but certainly the second time that was addressed.
So, so the original question came from a Phillipston resident, but not a Templeton resident?
Correct.
Is that correct? And how did Templeton get involved in this?
Well, Templeton has to be involved and they have to be informed because it is, when we start talking about the, the project funding agreement for the Templeton Elementary School, it's the, it's Templeton's project. They, they, they should know, of course, and we have talked about this as last year, any communications that I, that come to me or I, I sent to them. Of, of course, are forwarded through not only the school committee, but of course the Templeton, um, select board. That makes sense. Uh, you know, that's where the, that's where the money is coming from. That's their building. So why am I responding? Carter, Terranceini and I, they know I, we've had this conversation. They know that I'm preparing this response. It will, of course, will go to Templeton. But I think that the interesting piece is that what comes up quite a bit and I, you know, certainly could have talked, you know, when we start talking about committees, when we start talking about the Phillipston School Building, because there was an article in the paper again, for the special town meeting. And there were some, you know, there were some comments in there about how there was nothing in chapter 70, um, about, um, you know, minimum local contribution. I'm going to disagree and certainly will be forwarding the information, um, in chapter 70, section two and beyond, uh, that, that covers that. First, I, I think the other part of it is that, um, you know, you know, the, the, the dollar amount, you know, was left off of the first, you know, um, warrant article. And there's these, you know, they voted to zero and and so there's, I mean, you can see there right in the warrant that, you know, it's there and certainly it was, it was in the newspaper just a couple of days ago. Um, I think that the other part of this, and I know that the committee and we have, I think Rick's still here somewhere. There's Rick. And Anne Marie, uh, certainly, um, and Jeff, uh, who, you know, it was, was part of the committee for a very short time, but, um, you know, the, the Phillipston Building Committee, um, was, was, uh, it, it had to have been formed for at least three years. It had to be into, you know, at some point, I think it's three years. And what I think that folks don't understand, I'm not sure if somebody what I, I, I'm not sure, you know, in terms of information, but, um, quite frankly, there, you know, we took a lot of heat about the, 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 uh, children were reassigned. First off, the school committee, as I said, the school committee, or the certainly superintendent doesn't close a school. It's not what we do. Within the, the regional agreement, we have seven days, you know, it's, it's in the section, section 10, I think, believe, I believe, off the top of my head. There are reasons why, you know, this, this action took place. One, I think it's almost tied, you know, but safety is always first, but one was financial. The issue is that pre-COVID, we had, we did not have, it was not going to be financially, um, we were not going to be financially solvent to pre-K through fives. That's been said for a very, very long time. In order to move the number of kids that we had, a bunch of things had to happen and we moved everybody and everyone knows that story. I get it. But what I'm saying to you is that the building itself, quite frankly, has some serious deficiencies and flaws, like all buildings. And I think that one of the thing really seriously is that it has to be addressed is that it, it, it just wasn't fit for kids. Quite frankly, and I know that people don't want to hear that on one side of this. But certainly the folks at the committee know that there were some significant issues that we were trying to resolve prior. I'm working very hard to do that. And, and if I'm to be quite frank, and I try to be, you know, we were doing a lot of the work that just, just wasn't, you know, in our scope to do. And I, you know, I, again, I wasn't part of the committee, although I was at many of the meetings on the periphery. I, I will gladly, you know, of course, you know, turn it over to either Rick or Anne Marie. If Margaret, you know, again, would like to entertain that because I think that that's the information that folks also need to know. But let me be clear, it was financial, the reason why we made to make those decisions. Um, there were other factors as well.
Okay. So I just have one more question and maybe the article, if I read it, would answer this, but I guess I'm, I'm a little confused as to why a Phillipston resident is complaining about issues having to do with Templeton residents, I guess. Or maybe I have it confused.
No, I, I think you have it correct. I think that anyone
Didn't they come to us?
I can't answer.
As a committee?
I, I don't know. I don't, I don't know that part. I think that the MSBA being, you know, an entity needs to take, needs to take phone calls from residents. That's their job, you know, just like the schools. Um, I think that, um, why Phillipston might be interested in that is because I believe that they may have thought that that someone acted out of, you know, out of turn, um, which then of course necessitated the kids being, you know, relocated. I, I don't, um, and I can't speak for folks. I think that that's generally what, um, what the, what the gist of the conversation was. But I think that, you know, the other parts of this is that, you know, I think the best decision was made in, in the passengers, the kids. Um, and we've, you know, we've gone over that over and over again, but I'm just notifying the board of this because you'll, you'll get my summary, um, along with the conversation and I, and I certainly did not want it to be kind, you know, I didn't want it to be out of the blue. Like, why did I just receive this today? For example, without, without, you know, talking about it now, but, uh, you know, so there it is. There's the story as I know. And of course, the, the summary will be, um, the information that the MSBBA has requested will be as soon as the Mars gets to me, back to me, I'll be sending that along.
Is that, that good Lori? I, I, I think just, just to clarify, I believe that the original article that came out was some Phillipston residents had received, they claimed to have received information from the MSBA that could have impacted the funding of the Templeton Elementary School. And that's what kicked this off because who gave them that information? If that information is true, how come it hasn't been communicated to the folks in Templeton? Since it is their building and that's how, why we're here because Dr. Kazvin said, hey, wait a minute. You know, th- this doesn't sound right. So let's find out how this happened. So I think that might summarize a little bit of, of how we got here. The motives and whatnot, you know, aside, um, it just, and that was your question, you know, why is someone from Phillipston inquiring about, you know, the Templeton building without the folks in Templeton getting the information? So.
Right, right.
So hopefully we'll.
And I think I might have wanted to see the, the report before I, I got bamboozled with this, on a Zoom meeting because I was, I was a little, uh, little shocked, I guess, with, with what you just put out there.
Yeah, I know we've talked a little bit about it, but not, not much. So, um, but I think the, the report only because I've, I, we've had multiple communications with different entities, uh, Desi being one, reporting out why the district needs to make the moves it's making. So I'm assuming the bulk of that is just going to be a copy and paste. To state the narrative of the, you know, the decisions we needed to make, so it'll be interesting to hear back from the MSBA. What, what their take on everything is and, you know, what I would like to hear, um, I think I shared this with you, Dr. Kazmin, the other day is, you know, give us a firm yes or no. What is, what is the answer? You know, what, what are the bounds that we're working within? So we understand when we make decisions, what the impact might be. Um, and they just keep failing to, to, you know, put it on paper what that is and we really need that. So.
Right. So apparently my request will do it, I, from what I can gather is that the, my request as to the impact of the grant, right, the monies, um, and, and changing the terms of the PFA. In essence, um, what, what are the ramifications of that? I certainly can't answer that question. Um, and no one has, of course, offered that at any, at any level, uh, quite frankly. So I will write this letter. Um, I'm, again, I'm getting some guidance from the regional association on, on, on a matter or two, but I, I just, I wanted to make sure before you receive the report, that, you know, you understand, just, just so you have a pre, you just have a precursor before you receive this information. It's, I know it's lengthy and I know that goes back all the way to March. I, I understand that completely. Um, I was, I was, um, I was taken back as well, uh, because quite frankly, I thought that we had already hit our requirements by the first report that I sent um, in terms of, um, the reasons, um, for, uh, you know, our financial issues, but.
Um, so just, just to continue on with the Phillipston School discussion. And we can kind of jump ahead. Usually we report out subcommittees, but I know that there hasn't been a committee, um, meetings for, for Phillipston at this point. I was just wondering, you know, I keep hearing and seeing commentary, um, you know, with COVID, you know, why can't we use the building? You know, is there a need? And I just wanted to put that out there for discussion. Um, I know you've already mentioned that there are some repairs that would need to be made. And I'm just wondering if we can understand what, what those repairs might look like and what, what, what's with the building that we should be aware of.
I'm going to turn it over to, I guess, either Rick or Anne Marie and of course Jeff, who was technically part of the committee. Again, I was in, I was in attendance, but I, I wasn't in the, the actual meeting and I'm, I think Rick would probably be the, you know, the best to start because he, he, he had to do a lot of bird dogging of the, of the issues and, you know, had to do a lot of the walkthroughs with folks. So I guess I'll just, I'll defer to Rick if that's, if that's okay.
Sure. Sure. The, uh, initially, the Phillipston Elementary School Building Committee meeting was formed just about three years ago. Our first meeting was in September, of, uh, 2017. And I think initially, and I'm not going to go through a, a, a novel explanation, but basically there were 13 items that this seemed to be of concern to, uh, the board members. And, uh, when they brought me on, uh, brought me into the board, it was air conditioning in the units, roof units, uh, you know, a lot of maintenance issues that they wanted to get attended to. We, we did attend to it. The discussion then turned to the fact that, uh, Phillipston was about ready to come out of their payments on the new school, uh, the new high school here in Eric Gansett. So, uh, there were members of the, of the Phillipston Town Committee, which thought, well, perhaps they could take that payments, roll it over into renovations for the new, uh, to Phillipston Elementary School. Good idea. We ended up bringing in an architectural firm out of Worcester that came in. They did plans, uh, and renovations and took ideas from the members of the committee as to what they'd like to see in the building and all that. And that was presented to the, uh, selectman. Meanwhile, a interim fire chief, uh, came into Phillipston, said he'd like to have a tour of the building. We gave him a tour, uh, in the fall of, I think it was 2018. And he stated there was no sprinkler system in the building. Uh, and, and minimal, uh, fire detection system in the building. And his quote was the interim chief stated that he could not exempt the school from having a sprinkler system because the safety of the occupants is the utmost priority. The committee was in full agreement. So at that point, uh, they decided to go out and get proposals for upgrading the fire system, putting in a sprinkler system. And we brought in a couple of different companies, Johnson Controls. Couple of the meetings I missed and they ended up bringing in a, another company. Anne Marie, you might recall the name of the other company, but proposals were put together to upgrade the, the smoke system in the building, to upgrade the sprinkler system in the building. Uh, and these were all proposed and brought forth, uh, around January of 2019.
The other, the other company was NV5. That was the company that would design the sprinkler system. So their representative came out to a couple of different meetings and talked to the committee. And he had given a rough estimate of what it would cost to go with the whole system. And then the committee, one of the final things that the committee did was that the committee voted to ask NV5 for a quote for what it would cost to draw up plans for that. That was a cost of $9,500. And at our last meeting that we had, I think it was in January of this year, us as the committee had voted for the select, for the selectmen to look at that proposal in, see if they would put it on the town meeting to start the ball rolling, to start gathering real prices and things to do. The whole reason we started this committee back in 2017 is because that building needs a roof. Back in 2017, we put a Band-Aid on it and we were told by the company that you have three to five years. And like Rick said, the finance member that was on the committee with us thought it would be a good idea to address all the issues that the building need and then bring it in front of the town for repairs. It just never made it there.
And there were, there were, um, there were regulations, you know, the, the architectural firm that came in said that, you know, that we had limits on what we could spend on that building before a lot, major renovations would have to kick in. And basically at the time, uh, they said if you had exceeded 30% of the appraised value of the building over a three, if you spent more than 30% of the appraisal, uh, value of the building in a three-year period, that it would kick in all kinds of new regulations. ADA, uh, brought up to date. Um, I think at the time we went to the assessors and correct me if I'm wrong, Anne Marie, but I think the building and properties was assessed at $1.4 million. So basically we were looking, we couldn't exceed probably $470,000 or so in expenditures over a three-year period. And the roof alone, we were looking at quotes of approaching a half million dollars just in the roof alone. That didn't include the fire system. That didn't include the sprinkler system. So as Anne Marie said, you know, this was all, you know, brought up and, and, and selectmen were made aware and nothing ever really moved forward. So that left kind of a, a building that, you know, we had questions about, about keeping students in.
During this time, we did get some small projects done, um, in the newest section of the building, the town paid for in they, replaced five of the seven heating and air conditioning units, their rooftop units. Those were all replaced last year. We've always been pretty good about trying to keep up with maintenance on that building. Last summer we carpeted, was it four classrooms, Rick? Four classrooms. I had obtained a grant for part of the cost. We installed a security system with cameras in that building in the keyless entry. So the grant picked up part and then the town picked up the remainder. So there's, there was, there was quite a lot of work done, but the real expensive major pieces are what sort of like stopped with the building project.
Thank you for, for that update. Um, because I think it's important for us to, to take those pieces of information. And, and weigh them with, you know, as I said, the questions that I've been seeing and have been asked about, you know, could we use that building? I think some of the, the issues in the building would make us think twice about putting students back there at this point without a commitment to make some changes, um, from the town. So I think might be my opinion anyway. Anyone have any questions or comments on, um, either the, anymore about the MSBA or the PME? Anyone have any questions or comments on either the, anymore about the MSBA or the PMES at this point? See, Mrs. Trifilo, yes?
Yeah, I think our notes on school committee meetings and our notes on the closure of buildings in themselves have the information that we need because there have been extensive conversations and attempt of communication with both towns. And I think that if we go right back to our notes, we have it, we have it all there.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I, I would agree. We've def, this isn't a new conversation. But, you know, in light of, as I said, just the questions that I had seen coming across, I'm, I'm glad that we just readdressed it again. Any, anybody else have any questions or comments? And then I'll go back to Dr. Kazavant. Was there any last pieces on your superintendent report that you wanted to throw out there at this point?
I, I think that honestly between everything that does it, I think, oh, no, I'm sorry, the regional agreement, I'm sorry, that's the last part of it. So I did speak with a representative from the regional association. And there was, there was some vacation in there which we kind of missed each other, but they are going to send us information in regards to basically a form letter to invite both communities, right, to, to the rack. And there are, you know, one of the questions that I asked was, well, what's a, what does a general committee look like? What does a general rack look like? I mean, what is it, what is it made up of? And, you know, and, and there's some, you know, there are some basic, you know, positions that need to be filled. Of course, select board members, you know, school committee members from both sides I'm talking about now, committee members. I believe the, the, the business manager and the superintendent are, are there, but they're really just for informational, ex officio type of thing. So they're going to send us that information in order to put that out to both towns so that they can then, folks who are interested would, as I understand it, would apply or write a letter of interest to the board. You, and then at that point, you know, determinations will be made as to who will be on the rack. That's my understanding, but that information will be coming to me. I, I thought it would be here at least by today, but you expect that information to be, you know, be vetted out through you, but then of course, under your, under your tenure line, as the school committee go to both towns. Sorry, I forgot about rack.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Dr. Kazavant at this point? Seeing none, the next topic was for Kate, which was teacher professional development, but I know we've already addressed the bulk of that. I didn't know if you had anything else to add. And I will insert here, there was one other comment or question that came in through on the chat feed and I thought it was a good one that I, that I saw I'm going to, I'll put it out there and maybe Kate, you can also respond to this. It was from Naieli Crosby and she asks, "When will new students be able to collect Chromebooks to kindergarten and pre-K get one too?"
I think that's a Dr. Kazavant question.
Thanks, Kate. So I know, I know that the, the tech department is, they're, they're finishing up, quite frankly, programming all the computers, okay? And then how we're going to distribute these computers, the, the Chromebooks is, will probably be in a couple of different ways, right? So there'll be the folks with the kids who are in a cohort A and B. Well, we've, we'll have, you know, we'll have them in person, so that'll be, when I say easier, that'll be more convenient. In terms of the folks who have yet to have a Chromebook and from, who are remote, I know that we're going to, we're, we're going to work on that sooner rather than later because we don't want a lot of congestion on the schools, right? To pick up Chromebooks. In ter, in terms of pre-K, I am, I, I want to say that I don't believe that pre-K will have Chromebooks. Although I want to make sure that I speak with either Emily or Mike about that because I, I don't remember the conversation with Chromebooks for the pre-K kids, but certainly the kindergarten. So I will get back to folks on if pre-K are going to receive Chromebooks. And of course, the bigger plan will be, will be vetted out to the community as to how do you pick up a Chromebook? If you don't already, if the district hasn't already provided one for you, you know, March.
Thank you. And I'll, now I'll turn it back over to Kate if you have any other information on teacher PD or anything curriculum instruction related that you wanted to share at this point? You're muted.
Yep. I think we covered it earlier around the matrix for teachers. I would add that we are going to have some guidance and documents for parents as well as, you know, links to training modules for parents who might need them around some of the platforms like Google Classroom or we use a clever login for security and safety for our students. So we are looking at parent PD as well.
Thank you. All right, I am going to move on then. We have subcommittee reports. I'm going to kind of breeze through these because we've just gotten back into the subcommittees and I think most all of them have been focusing on reopening. Academic administrative met earlier this week and again, the focus was on the reopening plan. Mrs. Trifilo, did you have anything to add to that?
No.
Okay, thank you. The finance subcommittee met yesterday, again, focused on reopening and what it meant for the numbers, talked a little bit about 1/12. Hank or Vicki, anything to add to that? Nope, I see shaking heads. Hank?
A lot of work.
A lot of work. Yes. Facilities, Rick's already given us an update on facilities, so we're good there. Policy, we do have four policies. And unfortunately, Mrs. Kozel, who normally reads the policies, can't be, couldn't be with us tonight. But we have four policies that the policy subcommittee, we met on Monday to discuss and are looking to see if the committee would entertain putting these into implementation right away rather than going through our first reading, second reading process because of the nature of the policies. Mrs. Mattson, I don't know if you wanted to read them. Do you have that information in front of you? If not, I certainly can read the policies. I didn't know if you, you were able to.
Did you want me to read all of them or just the, the little cap?
I think the little captions is good. Yep, the little captions should be fine.
Okay. Okay, so the first one that we're looking to push through is ACAB on harassment. The June MASC bulletin contained an article relative to the US DOE changes to 12 regulations. And we've been working with MASC General Counsel Peterson again to create a model policy that addresses the issues created by these changes. While it appears this action was taken to force colleges to comply with due process requirements, it also applies to K through 12 education. Effective August 14th, 2020, school committees are required to adopt an evidentiary, evidentiary standard of either preponderance, ponderance of evidence, greater than 50% chance that the claim is true or beyond reasonable doubt. Standard proof that is close to reasonable certainty. Are you still with me?
Yes.
Did I lose you?
Yeah, no, we can still hear you, Lori, if you want to read the other three.
Did I lose you?
No, I think you may have.
Are you still there?
Yeah. Can you hear us?
All right, so, also, can you hear me?
You know what, Lori, we're having a hard time with your, well, we're having a hard time with your. Yeah, we're having a hard time with your connection, Lori, so.
Can you hear me?
I, I can hear you, but it's, it's, it's very, it's not very good, your connection. So if you'd like, I can go.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, so the next policy up for consideration is a new policy, which is EBCFA, which is face coverings. And this policy was recommended by MASC and it was written using guidance from the state and the Centers for Disease Control. And it's intended to provide a model for requiring face covering toward the COVID-19 pandemic. The third policy was a proposed update to policy IHBG-R, which is homeschooling. And it, we needed to update the policy to specify that the superintendent may assign a designee to administer the homeschooling program under him. Our policy was silent on this, so this, we were just adding that in for clarification. And then the last policy is a new policy as well, IHBHA, which is remote learning, which sets the policy for remote learning as a form of instruction in the event of a district-specific emergency. And it also includes the development of the remote learning plan. So, so these four policies, the policy subcommittee had met and agreed that we would like to ask the committee to, one, take a vote to see if we could pass these without following the policy procedure in place, which calls for first and second reading. So with that being said, I would entertain a motion to accept the following policies for implementation. ACAB, which is harassment, EBCFA, face coverings, IHBG-R, homeschooling, and IHBHA, remote learning. And we would accept these policies by suspending our regular policy on policy and bypass the first reading and go straight to implementation. So I would entertain a motion to do so if someone would choose to do that.
I'll move.
I have a motion from Mrs. Chartier and I believe that was a second from Mrs. Mattson?
Yeah.
Okay. So are there any questions on any of those policies?
I got just one quick question and I will assume that the committee did look at it. I think in particular with the face covering, none of these policies are going to affect any of the other, other policies we have in place, like the dress code or anything like that. Did we, did we look into that?
So what I'll say is that there's, and I probably should have prefaced this from a policy perspective, Lori's laughing. One of the things that policy that we looked at was how do we look at all of our policies and ensure that we can update or make the changes? I think, I, I'm getting feedback, so I don't know if people could mute themselves. So MASC had actually sent a guide to us of things we needed to consider and the policies that could, we would potentially need to modify or put temporary exemptions in place for. So the policy subcommittee is actually in process of reviewing that fairly lengthy document to see what other policies are impacted. These ones here, I think your specific question, or do they counteract anything in place? And no, they really don't. They're, they're supplemental to what we have. One of the things I'll say about the face covering policy specifically is this is the policy. There will be additional information that the schools and the district will, will put together regarding, okay, so if you don't wear your mask, what happens? And that, that's more of an administrative thing that would go in the handbook, but of course, the handbook's an extension of policy. So we will get to the handbook soon. Once we pass this policy, now the, the principals can work on that for their handbooks and then we can ultimately approve the high school handbook. So. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we will do roll call vote. Mrs. Robashad?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier? Mrs. Mattson?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says, yes, so we have unanimously adopted and we will put directly into implementation those four policies. So I'd like to thank everybody for that. I would suspect that you'll be hearing more from the policy subcommittee at our next, not our next meeting in September, but the one after that in mid-September, once we've had a chance to get together and review all the changes to policy. Next, long-term planning, which the long-term planning committee met earlier in the month and to discuss shared services, which is something that the committee had asked the long-term planning committee to, to work on. So I don't think we have much of an update tonight, but we'll come back to that. It's one of our future meetings to talk about if we've had any movement. Templeton Elementary School Building Committee, we've already touched on it. I don't know if there's anything else, Mr. Mason, if you'd like to add anything on that?
No, there's nothing new right now.
Okay. PMES Building Committee, we've already discussed. We had created a new subcommittee, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, that met at the end of July to start planning what their agendas would look like. I don't think, I don't know if there's much to report out on at this point, but they will now continue to meet. I think Jeff, you were duly elected as the, the chair of that. Do you want to add anything to that or, you know, more to report next time?
Yeah, more to report next time. Thank you.
All right, there is no correspondence, so we have nothing there. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 2nd. I'm being hopeful that we can do this at 6:00 in the Kiva. So I have two questions for the group. We've been meeting at 5:00 on Zoom because it's easy for us, you know, we don't have to drive somewhere. Do we want to go back to our regular meetings at 6:00 in person or would we like to try to do them earlier?
Early is good for me, but.
Would everybody be available?
Five is fine.
Five? Okay, so what, what we're going to do then is we're going to, we'll reschedule all of our meetings to 5:00 regardless of if they're in person or not. Our plan is to meet in person. We'll have to discuss, and I, I spoke to Mrs. Varney earlier, the technology component. We have, have to be careful about how many people can fit into the space where we have our meeting. So we're, we've got some research to do about how we handle that to make sure that we comply with open meeting law by providing perhaps the live feed rather than having people in the audience with us. We'll also need to poll all the committee members if in fact you would prefer not to meet at this point. If we can have some hybrid plan, that as many can be there is great, but we'll use the Zoom platform to allow those who can't. So we've got a little bit of, of planning to figure out, but the, the, right now, what we're looking to do is to have the committee meet in person or at least in a hybrid state. And we'll, we'll reach out to everybody in the next few days and try to figure that out, what we can do technologically, so. Last chance for anyone, if anyone has any other questions or comments at this point? Okay, seeing none, we do need to go into executive session this evening. And we need to go into PRMGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Reason Number Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation with the NDEA and/or the UFCW if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair. Meeting will not return to open session immediately following. So if someone would like to make a motion, I have a motion by, was that Mrs. Mattson? Yep, and do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second from Mrs. Trifilo. We just needed to roll call, list, Mrs. Robashad?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yeah.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says, yes, so we will enter into executive session. I'd like to thank everybody for joining us this evening. And I think we've hit all the questions on the feed, so I think we're good there. And as I said, we'll meet in two weeks. We look forward to seeing everybody then. And we will, as I said, not be coming out of executive session. So thank you, everyone. The public portion of our meeting has, has been adjourned so we can enter into executive session.